And uplifting, but like.
I just, I just imagine that the founders. That would be an issue.
Being six o'clock based on the veil across the street, call the meeting to order. The agenda for the evening is pledge of allegiance, superintendent's update on English language learners, valid question two and information from DESI, update from the sugar shack. Next item is discussion items which are ARPA funding allocations, applications of which we'll talk about a number of them and why they're here tonight versus other things that have happened in the past. Budget initial draft presentation, citizens requests, school committee reports, action items and approval of minutes from ten sixteen and ten thirty. So for all of those who can, please rise and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have some interesting things to talk about tonight. And I guess with that, and we'll start with the superintendent's updates. Allison.
I'm going to invite Letitia Bromfield to come and join me here. And she's going to give you the overview of our ELL. She's going to do it from here, just so we can like tag team a little bit of need be. And I just want to say before she gets started, it has been such a pleasure to get to know. Oh, sorry.
It has been such a pleasure to get to know and work with Letitia. She's an exceptional educator, a great leader. And I really believe part of the vibrancy of this place is through the kind of many, many cultures and languages that are represented in our population of students here. And it also, I think for all of our students, gives them a sense of sort of the wider world that they live in and prepares them for entering that wider world. So it's a great thing to have here in the community and she does a great job supporting kids. And typically, this is a spring presentation. I asked Tisha to come and do it in the fall, in part because we are seeing some shifts in, in kind of the needs of the population that we have. And I wanted to sort of put that on the radar. I'm not sure kind of what we will be able to do about that short term, but over the long term, we may need to look at the structure of how we do our support for our English language learners. And so getting people started thinking about that and talking about that now seemed wise. So with that, I'm going to turn it over.
I don't know if I need this, I'm a little out.
I think, I think it's for the TV.
Yes. All right. Thank you for having me. It's good to be here again. I'm excited to tell you about the great things in our department and the things we have in place to support our learners. So again, our mission is to empower English learners. We do this by providing accelerated and collaborative language instruction. We support academic success for English learners. We foster students' growth as responsible, productive and global community members. We strive to ensure equitable access in social and academic settings. And we embrace and preserve students' heritage language in their cultures. So first I want to touch base a little bit about our student population. Westboro is a diverse community. Students who are not identified as ESL come to us from homes that also have a second language. So here you see all of the languages represented. With our largest languages represented are Spanish and Portuguese. However, more than thirty-three percent of the students in Westboro as a whole have a language other than English that's spoken in the home. Our students come to us from many different places in the world, but the majority of them were born in the United States. And the majority of new students that we're seeing are permanent move-ins from other states and other countries. So again, most of them were born here. Most of our students come to us from surrounding communities and they're here permanently. So now I want to switch and speak a little bit about what we do as language educators, English language educators. First, our main two goals is to break down content by adding scaffolds and providing opportunities for our EL students to learn and utilize academic language. ESL instruction is collaborative. We add an additional layer of language to the content. We have a strong connection. We make a connection between the WEDA standards, which are the language standards that we utilize to instruct the students, add it to the mass curriculum framework. So what we do is we add the language layer and make it accessible to students by adding to the curriculum frameworks. We deliver high quality instruction that's planned and collaborative. It's language driven, it's differentiated, it's culturally relevant, and it's based on the students' needs. So we strive to be able to include families, foster shared responsibility by collaborating with classroom teachers and content area teachers. We also, our goal is to make sure that students have equitable access to education and the things that are offered in the district. And we try to, well, not try to, we equip students with essential skills for success. There are several programs that we, that help our students to succeed. We have after-school academies at Gibbons, at Mill Pond, at the high school. Our high school students, our high school educators also act as club advisors. We have newly appointed ELE, English Language Education Department Team Leaders at Hastings. We have one for Hastings, one for Armstrong and Fields combined, one for Mill Pond, one for Westboro High and Gibbons combined. We also have our EL Summer Academy every year, which is three weeks in July for three hours a day, Monday through Thursday. This, this past summer, we had sixty-eight students enrolled in the program, five teachers and four paraeducators. We have our Curriculum Enhancement Committee in place, who is, our Curriculum Enhancement Committee, they're working on resources for teachers, developing our, our new speaker curriculum that we have in place. They're working on a Google Classroom to develop a bank of resources that classroom teachers can use to support EL teachers, I'm sorry, EL students when the teachers are not available. We're also working with other districts in terms of developing SLIF programming. So I work closely with a couple of districts. We're also a part of a community of practice from DESI where.
Can you remind people what SLIF is?
Oh, of course. So SLIF is, it stands for Students with Limited or Interrupted Formal Education. So we've seen an influx of students that are labeled identified as SLIF. So if a student has missed two or more years of education, formal education, they are considered to be a SLIF student. And we've seen an increase of those students. But we've also been working with WAC, well, I've been working with WAC in terms of being able to support them with the English language, with our youngest English learners, by providing ongoing professional development and consulting with them on an as-needed basis. We've also been able to share our knowledge with other districts. I presented at Matt Saul recently, at a Matt Saul conference, where we were able to share some of the things that we do, our best practices with other EL educators from across the state. Oh, one other thing, sorry. Go back to that slide. I can't go back. Okay, this one. Sorry about that. So we also have been working with our new teachers, because we do have a few new teachers in the department this year, on developing their skills as, as an educator, English language educator. So we had a new teacher orientation recently that went very well, where we gave the, we were working with teachers on how to plan language objectives, how to plan alongside the teacher for content objectives, and all of the things that they need to know in terms of DESI regulations and requirements. Our LPEC is rebuilding again because it, we've not been able to keep the same core group of people, so we're actively still recruiting new members. It's supported right now by myself and EL teachers. And our focus is to welcome and support new families, recruitment, and just raise awareness for the families. Our parent liaisons work very closely with the community for non-English speaking families in the district. They are our connection to keep the parents involved. They are also, they also act as our translators and just giving parents, helping the parents to have the tools that they need to better support their students. In our family engagement committee, our highlight was our newcomer welcome dinner last year, where we had families in the district that have been in the district for under a year. We had community donations and community organizations represented. We had the night, did this at the Knights of Columbus. Local organizations came through, the public library, and we had food donations, monetary donations, and most of the parents and families, oh, we also had a school bus donation that was able to pick up the families to bring them to the event. We've also this year been actively involved with registration and doing family interviews as new families come to Forbes. We meet them here. Whoever's available for the teachers, we come over, we do interviews, we get to know the families, we learn more about the students before they go out to their new schools. Our adult English academy is in, I don't know how many years we've been doing it. It's a long time, maybe ten, ten years that it's been active. So right now, we have three levels of language instruction. We have forty-eight registered students, adult English students, six teachers, and it's on Zoom. We find that Zoom is the most convenient for the parents when they have young children. And it's well, well received, they appreciate it. Mill Pond hosts an English language open house for each grade level. And we are still actively doing home visits as needed. And then we'll talk a little bit about the enrollment trends. So this is the, this year, we have the highest number of ELs that we've started with. At least as far as I've been in the district from 2016, we've never started with four hundred fifty-five students, English language learners. Our students who start with us in kindergarten, they usually exit the program between third and fifth grade. And our students who are on English language success plans, they have language goals in place and they are progress monitored. So FEL students are our former English learners. They've met the exit criteria and they're monitored for four years. Exited students are no longer monitored. They're fully, completely comparable to a native speaker and they are no longer associated with the program at all. And the students on the English learner success plan, these are students who have not made two years of growth on the access test. And so they're placed on the success plan where we can progress monitor them and provide them with the supports that they need to be able to make progress. Our long-term Ls, LTL, students who have been enrolled in the program for five or more years. Most of these students exit, most of our students usually exit within four to seven years, but for these students, they're considered long-term Ls because they've been in the program for five years or more. And there are thirty-two of those students, so we're doing pretty well in that area. So as you can see, Hastings still has the highest number of students, English language learners. What's different this year is that the number in the high school has increased significantly. And also we're seeing huge growth at Armstrong. The goal is to see a decrease in English learners as they go up in the grades. And as you can see, we're pretty good at doing that because most of our students do exit between third and fifth grade. So this, I don't want to be deceiving if you look at last year compared to this year. Last year, when I presented to you, it was in the spring. So the number is around, the number that we're at right now is around where we ended the last school year at four hundred fifty-five. So like I said before, this is the first time we've ever started with such a high number of English learners, who are mostly move-ins, permanent residents in the district. We usually see an increase in students around January and then again around March. So the final number for this year may, may still grow significantly. And again, if you could look at this chart for growth over the past three years, we see the most growth at Armstrong and at Westboro High School. So this, in particular, is Westboro High School in particular. And I wanted to include this because if you look from nineteen, I'm sorry, from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty to now, the numbers have almost doubled at Westboro High School. And this increase in EL students, we're seeing an increase of students who are SLIF. Those are the students with limited education, who require more service minutes. So it's, it is a bit of a strain, but we're working it out and we're providing the students with what they need. So with these students that have limited education, we are working with them on providing basic literacy skills, basic numeracy skills, along with social and academic language. Our numbers in the preschool actually went down a bit this year. But again, and I keep revisiting the, the high school and also Gibbons, we've seen the numbers growing, but also we've seen the increase in those SLIF students who need the additional service minutes to be able to be successful. So I wanted to share with you a little bit about English language proficiency. When you are a new speaker, you don't come to the school to Westboro with no English. You're considered a Level One English speaker. And the goal is to get you to four point two overall, three point nine in literacy, to be able to exit the program. So as you go up in your level, the number of minutes that you need decreases. However, when you're at Level One or Two, that requires ninety to one hundred twenty minutes of English language education per day. And that's where we're seeing the big increase. For Level Threes and Fours, that's a minimum of forty-five minutes of English language education per day. Traditionally, we've seen a lot of Level Three students, which is a shift now because we're seeing more Level One and Two students who require more minutes. And students that exited usually, like I said, between five to seven years. That's pretty much the average when they reach a score of overall four point two in the literacy, which is reading and writing of three point nine. So that's the goal, that's the target. So this just shows you the, the number of students at each level across the district. So again, I go back to the students that are Level Ones and Twos. These are the students that we are required to service and with ninety to one hundred twenty minutes per day of English language education. The Threes and Fours are forty-five minutes per day. As you can see, the numbers have increased over time. But we're striving to get them up to the exit criteria. So we are dedicated to providing our students with an engaging and welcoming environment. We want to welcome families. We work collaboratively with, with the content area teachers to build social and academic language. We provide students with equitable access and culturally responsive instruction. We equip students with essential skills for success by supporting them and obtaining English language proficiency. These are the goals that we strive for and we are pretty successful, but we are still trying to adapt to the change in population. Think there's a few more pictures.
Thank you. Jakub, any questions?
Yes, hi, Letitia. Thank you very much for this update. There's a lot of information that, that's compiled in these slides. So thank you for the work for putting it together. Well, I have a few general questions and then a few specific questions. So one is, given that we have more students, how is the district dealing with it? Do you feel like the teachers are appropriately supported to meet this, you know, increase in the number of students?
Our team is working hard. They are working hard to make sure we meet the minutes and we're providing students what they need. Fortunately, we have a position, an open position for a one-year English language education teacher. That is, we're actively looking, if you know anybody. So that's one of the, part of the solution is to add another person. Because like I said, it's not the amount of students that's necessarily the barrier. It's the number of Level One and Two students that we struggle with meeting the minutes, but we are finding a way, but it is increasingly more difficult.
Thank you. Another question, I mean, it keeps coming back. I'm sure Sarah will ask about it too. It's the difference in the number of L students in FELs compared to the other elementary schools. And I see there's, there's more staffing, there's five FTEs at FELs.
At FELs, there's one point five.
I'm sorry, five at Hastings, four at Armstrong, and then, and then one point five at FELs. Does it have, you know, having much fewer ELs, do you think it has other impact on the, on the, on the classes, on the students, or?
Could you say that, rephrase that?
Yes, so that, I'm just trying to understand if, you know, from the, from the point of equity that's always brought up in this context. I understand that the, the students are, their needs are met with the number of EL teachers but does, does it have a wider impact on the performance of other students in the classroom, do you think?
Are they performing at the same level?
Right.
It depends on the level of the student. So Level One and Two students, they generally need that ninety to one hundred twenty minutes of pullout to be able to gain any language. So we have to look at it like, we have to build their social language first before they can get the academic language. Once they start to get the academic language, then ideally at Level Three, they're going into a cold talk classroom, at which, where they get more academic language. That's ideal. We're trying to make it happen and mostly it happens.
Thank you. Another question I had was, you mentioned that there is a big influx in the number of students at the high school. Is that also, is that just brand new students? Or are these also students that, that came from the eighth grade and they're now adding to the number? Was there a bump in, you know, last year that, that's being?
Most of the move-ins that we have, they're from within the Massachusetts, mostly all of the move-ins. However, the newest students that weren't with us, are you saying the students that weren't with us in eighth grade?
Right.
The students that weren't with us in eighth grade, those are the students where we're seeing they're coming as SLIF, with limited, with interrupted education.
Okay. And could you explain, there was, at some one of the slides you had ELSP. I didn't quite catch that.
That's a English language, English learner success plan. So for the ELSP, we give the ACCESS, which is the test of English language proficiency every January. So the English language success plan, if you're an English learner and you haven't made two years of growth on that test, then we are required to put that student on a success plan. So that success plan includes goals based on their weak domain. So speak in, listen, read and write in. So suppose you, you know, you, you're struggling with speaking and writing, then you're going to have goals in place that address your speaking and writing needs. And we're also progress monitoring you this year. I didn't write that in there. We have Flashlight three sixty, which is a progress monitor and monitoring computer-based system where we can keep eyes on and we're regularly using the data to be able to adapt our instruction to the student needs.
Okay, thank you. I mean, you guys are very busy. I just want to add, in the end, I, I'm, I'm very impressed with all the additional programming you provide for the families, the classes, the social events. They mean a lot to those families and, you know, it really helps them feel part of the community when they can meet peers who are in a similar situation as families. I think that's, I think that's a great aspect of your program, so thank you.
I think one thing I'll follow up on, just in terms of, it sounded like part of what you were asking is about, you know, when there's a large population of English language learners, what's the impact on other students in the class?
Yes.
And I, I think one thing I know for sure is that a couple of things are interesting that can happen. One is we have kind of co-teaching partnerships sometimes with an ELL teacher, ESL teacher, and a Gen Ed teacher. So there's actually, sometimes that means they get a better adult. So there's actually, sometimes that means they get a better adult-to-student ratio. And the strategies that teachers use to make sure English language learners understand what's going on in the class are actually great strategies for everyone. And I think I've watched a professional development that Latisha's done for the leadership team, for other people, and really it leans into that idea. The same things that are going to help kids who are learning this new language are going to reinforce academic vocabulary for all kids. And it actually kind of raises everybody's game. So it's a gift, truly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Some of, you've already answered some of my questions, so thank you. I do have a couple of specific questions. The bump in the high school, are those students coming from, do they have a particular language background? I'm wondering if there's some.
There's no pattern. The number, the number 1 and 2 languages in the district are Spanish and Portuguese. However, over the past few months, I've met people that speak Farsi, that's the same as Persian. I forget the language that was in the Congo. And I've seen so many different languages. I can't tell you all of them. But it's not just one way anymore. It's a very diverse, diverse population in this town, which is a gift.
Right, right. I noticed the, for the early childhood center, 35 students with zero teachers. Yeah, can you, I'm curious about that.
Yeah, according to the state, pre-K doesn't need an EL teacher. We don't have to, we have to identify them.
Okay.
As English learners, we have a screener, a prescribed screener from DESI that we have to use to identify the students. We have to progress monitor them, but we don't have to service them with a teacher. So I am it. I work with them closely. They consult with me regularly and I, we have a four PD series that we started in September. So we have a third part coming up in January, where we've been, we've developed together progress monitoring tools, how to, what, how to word the goals in terms of English language learners with disabilities on IP, the new IP format. So we, I work closely with Michelle and with her team to develop professional development around it. So our next phase is now that we've introduced them to the new screener, we've given them the progress monitoring tools, now we're asking them to use the progress monitoring tools. And on our next PD session, we analyze the data together and walk through what are the next steps, what strategies can we put in place? Because preschool by nature is language-based.
I think part of the theory is that all preschool kids are learning language, right? You know, all of them at the same time are sort of developing. And so when we get kids early enough, just the immersive environment with some additional supports and monitoring can kind of do the job.
I just want to interject. I believe K doesn't, is not required by the state to have.
Not required to deliver.
The same basic concept.
Language-based. So for kindergarten, we do provide service. We provide 45 minutes of push-in instruction for classrooms that have English learners.
And then my final question has to do with the ELSP. So those students, how long have they typically been in the program?
Typically, it's the most, the students that we see the most, that I have the most on the ELSPs are Gibbons and high schoolers. So they're the long-term Ls.
Okay.
But they're also often the ELs with disabilities.
Oh.
Yeah. So it's kind of twofold there, which I think the new IP format kind of recognizes that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Latisha, for coming out. I also want to shout out to your whole department. I think that you guys are doing fantastic work. I, when you had introduced, and I want to say you introduced it over COVID, which was the adult programming, around when it took off. And it's, I think it's phenomenal, all the other things that Yakub mentioned, the family gatherings, et cetera. It's just so heartening to see that you guys are working so hard to make sure that these families feel included. So I have a couple of questions and Yakub addressed a couple of them and so did Steve, so we're in good shape here. They're going to get less and less. This might be a simple question. I just wonder, what percentage does, I know you said that an L student, you gave a definition of what an L student is. Does that necessarily mean that English is not their first language, correct?
Generally, yeah. So when the, the way we identify English learners is when, let's say, Allison is my parent, she's required to fill out a home language survey upon registering. So if she indicates on the home language survey any language other than English, we're required to screen the student. So when we screen the student, if they test in, if they meet the criteria to be in the program, then we send the letter and that initiates them receiving service.
Okay, okay. So it's not like a self-identified, there's an assessment that, that happens right at the get-go. And I didn't see in any of the charts, and maybe there were so many that I missed or didn't understand, is, do we have any like individual student growth charts to see how? I know you said the exit is usually around.
Five to seven years.
Right. So I see the, you know, what you have for population-wise throughout from 2018, I believe. But, you know, I imagine we're, we have growth charts, achievement charts to see how the progress is and.
Over time.
I don't know if we have anything we can look at for that. That would be interesting to see if the program is doing what it's intended to do.
In terms of like student study of?
Well, making sure that, I mean, you have a lot of students exiting, but, you know, I would like to see what the percentages are there and what students are not exiting who have been through the program.
Right, right. So the students that are becoming the long-term Ls or the students that are on the success plan.
That's how you classify them, correct?
Right, right.
Another question I have is related to Hastings. So, you know, and I appreciate Allison, the light that you shed on that with respect to the students being able to learn from one another and all of the benefits of it, which I agree with. I also think socially it's wonderful because, you know, they probably feel more comfortable. My concern is, on the flip side, if I were to just play devil's advocate, my concern is that wouldn't it also be beneficial for them to be in an environment where they have less L learners around them to help influence their growth as well? Where, you know, as opposed to maybe getting together in their own little social circles and continuing to speak in the language that they speak in, where, you know, whereas if they're coupled with, and I'm sure the attempts are made irrespective, I'm just wondering how, you know, socially, if it may be better if they were dispersed equally. I see a huge disparity or, you know, I'm not going to call it disparity, but there's a huge difference between, you know, how many we've got at FELLS and how many we've got at Hastings. I'm really happy to see that it looks like you guys have increased the amount of teachers or maybe the, I think you have at Hastings, and it's significant, 1 to 5. I mean, it seems like it's proportional. I just, I really question that and I'm not sure if that's a conversation or it's really not, it's something that I am, is not of concern at all.
I don't know how the school lines are drawn in the town. Is that, that might be part of what you see, but I don't know that part. So, but in terms of socially, two things, I think, we lean on the native language to be able to teach the English, so in conjunction with. So the native language is that gift that we use to build upon when we're teaching English. So we want them to hold on to their language and use it in social settings. We want them to because that makes it easier for us over time to teach them the English. The other thing is, the classes, when the students are in the classroom, they're mixed classes, so they're not just in classrooms with Ls. It's usually when we pull them out for direct English language instruction when it's just Ls. But that's usually when we're trying to get them survival language, when they're at that very beginning, if that makes sense. We're trying to get them everything they need to just be able to articulate what they need, they need and want.
Okay. I mean, I know we've talked about this before, I brought it up before. It's just something that keeps coming across and for me, it's something that I'm just curious about. I know that previously when I mentioned it, it was, I think it's not of huge concern and I, you know, for you all, because obviously you're, I'll defer to your, you know, you know better, but I just wanted to bring it up again as to if it's something that needs to be looked at. And certainly it has a lot to do with the districting and how things are, we know that, but, you know, their equity is first and, you know, so if it needs to be looked at, it needs to be looked at. And then the last question I have is regarding, so this might be connected to MCAS, but what is the, are there graduation requirements? As far as, if MCAS is no longer going to be the end-all, be-all for graduation, then as far as the L department is concerned, how does that impact graduation requirements and the minimum that needs to be met for graduation?
That's a good question, but I think across the state, it makes it a little easier for English learners, especially those SLIF students, to be able to graduate.
But does that also mean that there would be no requirement to have a certain level?
Honestly, I'm not quite, I don't know.
Or right now?
I mean, I think, we are going to talk about this a little bit. I think that essentially the removal of MCAS means the state has sort of kicked back to the districts articulating their own kind of graduation requirements for now. We'll see what comes from the legislature and things like that. But, you know, we do have internal requirements as well and all students are, have to meet those to graduate. So in terms of courses that you take and pass.
Right. I guess there are ELD classes. So there's like ELD science or ELD social studies that give them the content that they need, but also with the language embedded at the high school.
And those meet the core curriculum, basically, requirements? Okay. So then, okay, so then there's still no clear answer to be, I'm just curious as to, I mean, with respect, if we're embedding it, then we're still assisting, right? And that's at the high school level. So, and maybe it's not either determined yet or what's going to happen, but I would imagine that taking it independently, and I don't know if taking the MCAS has an L accommodation or anything like that either.
Nothing.
The only, the only real MCAS relief for EL students is that students who have arrived in the country for their first year are not required to take the English exam. They still have to take math.
They still, yes.
And science.
Everything else.
Everything else except.
The only thing they're exempt from is English, ELA, for one year only.
And MCAS results are sort of a factor that we look at in terms of exiting criteria as well.
So let me ask you this way then, Allison, I'll just ask you. Do you think that there is going to be any impact as a result of taking that piece away?
I mean, as far as I am aware, our current EL students are working through our system and graduating, you know, MCAS or no MCAS. You know, I think we are doing the things to provide them the supports they need to gain the English language skills to graduate and to gain other skills that they need. So, you know, I don't see this having a huge impact on us, but it is something to be mindful of. I think underneath your question, what I'm hearing is, is there a possibility we could be launching kids out into the world with a high school diploma and not having adequate language skills? We certainly don't want that and I think we have a team that'll work really hard to prevent that from happening.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Really appreciate you putting this together and all the work that you do. I just have a few quick questions. The first, I want to dive in just a little bit more to the summer and the adult program. I think it's great to see so much engagement and people participating in that. I am just curious, is there, like, was that capped, do you know, in the past few years? Or like the amount of people that participated, was that the amount of people that applied and wanted to participate?
For the adult English program?
Adult and the summer program as well.
The summer program, there's a criteria. So we generally take in students that are Level 1 or 2. Because at Level 3, they have the social language they need to develop academic. The Level 1s and 2s, they have the highest needs. So generally, it's the Level 1 and 2 students in the summer program. And for the adult English program, there's been years when we've had, because I teach adult English also, so there's been years where I've had 25 students, where there's been also years where I've only had four. So it really just depends. But I do invite all of you to join us on Zoom at some point. You know, stop by, it's fun, you know. I teach Level 4, so they, it's conversational. But it really depends. Sometimes with adult English, the numbers are really high, sometimes they're not, but the, the summer program generally stays between 50 and like 70 students.
Awesome. And so appreciate the invite. And so, and just to clarify, it sounds like there's no current restriction based on resources and teachers available, which is awesome.
For adult English, there's two teachers generally at each level. So on Zoom, we can break out, use breakout rooms. We've kind of mastered, you know, the Zoom thing.
Gosh, awesome. That sounds like it hasn't been a problem in terms of admitting people, which is great to hear. This is more clarifying, just from my own understanding. I know especially with the Level 1s and 2s, you talked about 90 to 120 minutes. Again, just from my own understanding, so when they are not in that class time and doing the English learning, they are in the general classes with the rest of the students, is that correct?
With SEI-endorsed teachers. So an SEI-endorsed teacher has been through training, which all of our teachers are mostly all, pretty much, almost 100% are SEI-endorsed, where they've gone through training. So they've gone through training that gives them the strategies and the techniques that they need to be able to support those students when the English language teacher is not present. And we also collaborate and consult with them regularly.
Awesome. Thank you for that. And then my final question, just one thing I did notice in the presentation is you were calling out the different ways that you engage with the students and the families, which is also great to hear. I did see that it looked like only the Mill Pond was called out for having like an open house. I was just curious, is there a reason for that? Are there any open houses at the other schools or potential?
The open houses are at the other schools, but, and the EL teachers are there, but Mill Pond, they did this, the Mill Pond EL teachers did this on their own accord where they started to, on open house night, they come in 30 minutes or maybe 45 minutes earlier and they meet with only EL parents. So we haven't replicated it everywhere yet, but that's something that they started.
Awesome. And I think that's incredibly powerful and probably very helpful for those parents as well. So it sounds like there, you see the potential for that maybe being expanded to the other schools as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Luckily, I'm last and everybody's asked all their questions. So I'll ask a few other strange ones, I guess. How strong is the effort to maintain the students' native language in terms of their culture and other stuff in particular? Lately, there's been a number of programs on PBS that deal with the fact that historically many, let's say governments or at least areas of the world have tried to disenfranchise those native cultures, whether they be Indian or whether they be, say, Spanish in the Southwest or areas like that. So, I mean, how do we particularly try to maintain their own native language and culture?
Well, we encourage it. So we encourage the parents to read to their children in the native language, because if you have literacy in your native language, that increases their chances of exit. We love them, but we want them to exit. So the more literacy they have in their native language, the faster they go on to exit and have English that's comparable to a native speaker. So we, we encourage you to hold on to your heritage language that makes you who you are, so we don't want to take that away from our children.
So that was the trap. The next question is, you mentioned that in fact, by maintaining the native language and using it to help teach English, how do you deal with language like Farsi or Russian in terms of having staff to teach it?
A lot of pictures, a lot of repetition. And we have these nifty new tools called Pocket Talks that, they're about the size of a phone. You can wear it. I mean, we only have like, I think we have 15 in the district right now, $250 each, if any donations or anything. But they're about this big, you can wear them and they have about 80 languages in this. So it just needs Wi-Fi to connect and they have real life translating back and forth. So for instance, this young man that did this drawing, I happened to screen him for English language and I used the Pocket Talk. So at the conclusion, when we were finished, he went to take it and I wanted to tell him, no, it's not, but he wanted to take it. So I was like, all right, let me just go with this. He took it back to his classroom, biggest smile I've ever seen, runs back to his, the rug space and starts talking, using it to talk to his friends. That was empowering to him because now he had this tool that he could communicate with his friends and it just changed his whole, it was beautiful. Just a beautiful moment. So we use, we use translation tools as needed, especially at the high school, the high school, not even, I shouldn't say that, especially with students who can read in their native language. Having them read in, most students that can read in their native language, they can pick up English text and read it, but they won't understand it. So if we have them read it in English and then use the, a translation device like the iPad to translate the page, then they can also understand it in their native language and make a connection between the English and the native language.
Sort of like using Babbel or something like that.
Right, right.
Yeah, one of the interesting things, I did some work in Brazil and generally, my understanding is they don't actually have formal education in Brazil. But it's amazing how many people that I ran into who obviously would speak Portuguese as their native language, but could speak very well in English. And I asked them, I said, how did you learn that? And they basically learned it by watching Westerns, US Westerns and other Western movies that, you know, might have Portuguese subtitles. So it's an interesting process, I guess, for the whole thing. But generally, I think over, over time, I've seen that we have a very good program. But generally, I think over, over time, I've seen that we have a very good program. Maybe not the best in the West, but certainly functional in delivering the product. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I guess we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. 18 minutes on your presentation. Helped get you there, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, you should, as you should. All right. I think next up is, I just wanted to, you know, put on your radar the memo that we got from the Department of Education with guidance around what to do in the wake of the ballot initiative that has removed MCAS as a graduation requirement that goes into effect as of December 4th. There were some retests for graduation that took place in, or are in the middle of taking place in November. Those are carrying on as scheduled, but after November 4th. While we will continue to have testing, that testing will not impact graduation. And, you know, there's some limited guidance. We expect more is coming our way. And in the meantime, what I've asked the high school folks to do is pull together kind of their documentation around what we do have internally for course completion and graduation requirements as our own internal measures. And we'll be kind of bringing that information and talking more about it in the months ahead. So this is just a little bit of a preview of more excitement to come.
Very good.
All right. I do, if we swap over to my slideshow, I have a couple of fun updates before we dive into budget things. Not that budget isn't fun, but I thought I'd start off with, first of all, I sent some, some of this around via email, but I got this wonderful update from Kristen Awal over at the Sugar Shack about kind of how they're doing and what's going on. She sent some great photos, I've included those there. But I also wanted to let you know a couple of nice highlights. One is, sales are up, you know. If you look at her numbers of October 23 versus 24, up by almost $2,000 over kind of receipts in the prior year. The participants in the Borough and the Sugar Shack have been out at the farmer's market, out at Devalley, kind of participating in Halloween events. As you can see, they've got some partnerships going on with other organizations, including the Cub Scouts. And they've sort of launched a new Borough Sugar Shack collection. So they're branding, doing some kind of fun things around that. And I really encourage you to always to swing by and say hi. It's a great place for holiday gift giving and all sorts of things like that. I did want to mention, you know, one of the things that has come up and a question that's come to me is around, you know, initially, the creation of this program, which was, I think, just before the pandemic, if I'm, timeline, Sugar Shack?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just pre-pandemic, a few years?
It's been, you're talking about how long?
Yeah, how long.
Let's see, the Borough's eight years, seven, eight years?
I think.
Actually, no, we had our fifth, last year, right? It was the 50th anniversary.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. I'm not, I'm not totally off then. I think some of the notion behind it is create a strong program and hopefully, at some point, tuition some kids in for the program. We haven't yet done that, but one really interesting thing that's happened is that instead of that happening, other districts are spinning off. So, you know, Shrewsbury, I think, has their own iteration of it. And I have to say, you know, as much as I would love the tuition in, I think in the grand scheme of things, that's great for everyone in the sense of, you know, when districts are providing this kind of programming across the board, it really does help students get the skills they need to sort of do work and sort of, you know, be a part of the community and gain valuable skills for life. So I think we're still looking at that tuition in thing though. So I wanted to say that out loud. A couple other updates. If you hit the next slide, I can hit the next slide, actually.
I got it.
Okay. Kindness Week kicked off, and it kicked off at the high school on Sunday. I was able to stop by. This is a Westboro Connects event, but really, the schools partner strongly. And I wanted to mention a few highlights of how the schools are really participating. We've got essentially morning announcements and appreciation notes and kindness rocks and things happening all over the place in the schools. Veterans clothing drive happening. We have Acts of Kindness Daily, letters to veterans, Thanksgiving cards that are going to go along with food outreach through, I believe, the senior center that's sort of spearheading that. And also, the Borough and Sugar Shack are going to be hosting an Art Buddies on Thursday as a special event. So lots and lots of things happening throughout the schools through this connection with Westboro Connects. In addition, it is tournament season, and Westwood, Westboro, I mentioned Westwood for a reason, I'll get to that shortly. Westboro High School Athletics are in the tournaments. I got to go see Westboro versus Westwood last night, girls volleyball, where our girls triumphed in three pretty decisive games. Is it games that match? I can never remember the structure. And so, girls volleyball will be heading to the finals with Oliver Ames. Tonight, our student rep Reagan is missing because she's playing in girls soccer tournament play. So girls soccer team's in the mix. Friday night, football is also in the mix. They'll be playing down at North Attleboro. And cross-country state tournament happens on Saturday. So if anybody wants to head up to Devens and watch students run really fast, that's a good place to do it. Finally, I wanted to mention that we had our fall full-day professional development on Election Day, and I had the chance to sort of boots-on-the-ground walk around and see some of it in action, and it was really impressive. A couple of highlights I can just mention briefly. Elementary literacy folks gathered to really look about, look at writing about reading and kind of increasing kids' sort of stamina and output for writing. And they were doing just fantastic work together there. Elementary math was looking at sort of start-of-class math tasks that increase the sort of depth and complexity of students' thinking. And we had, at the secondary level, continuing professional development around artificial intelligence and some really interesting things happening there. I think we'll, at some point this year, do a more full report out of what teachers have been learning, what are we talking about, and what are the implications for all of us, if we can figure those out? So that's kind of my what's going on update. And I think, next up, we have ARPA funding.
But before we do, did you have any comments from Westwood about the performance of?
They, you know, unsurprisingly left before I could get to them. I did go over and congratulate the coach of the, you know, of the Westwood team for having made it. That program has developed a lot in the last few years. They would never have made the tournament back when I was the principal at the middle school. And the coach of the Westwood team is a middle school English teacher who I know pretty well. So it was good to see everybody, but I said hi and went promptly over to the Westbournes and cheered very loudly, so. All good.
Okay, the next item is the discussion of ARPA.
All right. So just to frame this up, this is a conversation in part because we have additional ARPA funding available that's sort of unused money from the initial projects that kind of, and the initial round of projects. But there's a timeline on it, so we are here tonight. And I think our approach is the, to ask you to kind of give us permission to move a batch of projects forward, to kind of throw them into the mix, in part because we don't know yet what other projects are coming from the town and how they're all going to shake out, either funding or priority-wise. So if we sort of put everything on the table, we think there's a better chance we're going to get something done. I will say, if you ask me personally, I think I'm particularly fond of the parking lot project for Armstrong and Gibbons, because it actually would then knock a couple of things off our capital project list, one for this year coming in, one for a couple of years down the road. And, and it's a thing that could be useful for everyone and is important. But there are other important things there too, at various price points. And we are very hopeful we'll get some support from the town to carry some of this, along with other things that the town is hoping to get done.
So let me flesh out a little bit more as to what's going on here. For years now, I guess, two or three, that ARPA money's been out there, and each department had the opportunity to request a portion of the funds. The finance team, which includes the school department, as well as others from the town itself, has been working on how to use that money to the best. And ultimately, the distribution of it was voted by the finance team, but then given to the selectmen to allocate those funds. So in the beginning of the program, you had to have executable contracts in hand to know what the total amount of money to be spent was. And as a result of that, and estimates and process, as the projects came forward that were originally authorized, they didn't necessarily use up each one of the authorizations that were granted by the selectmen. So here we are. The end of the program is the 1st of December. So two weeks ago, at one of the finance discussions was simply, well, there's money left, and what are we going to do with it? And so the timing for us is to consider the list that you see here tonight in the format that they're set, there's justification for them, to present to the finance team this Friday. It's a special meeting of the finance team, to have them make a recommendation to the select board next Tuesday, which obviously is very close to the end of the month. Now, one of the things that is beneficial to the school department, and of course, would be to any other department that can do these things, is that many of the dollar amounts that you will see in the table to show up are awardable using the state non-bid list, because they've already established the low cost for given items that are in there. The second piece of the story is that the government relaxed the definition of whether it had to be complete by the end of the year, by the end of the authorization period, or whether it could be voted to be done and allocate the money and then be able to spend it as the process goes. So again, the school department was in the unique position to be able to create these dollar amounts by using the state bid list for most of them. And others, we have already had proposals, if you will, on the subject matter. So that's the background as to why we are hopeful. The amount of money left is quite large. And, you know, whether others will have offered from their departments equivalent list of things, we don't know. But we certainly want to be prepared, as Allison said, to use up all of it for the benefit of the town. And the majority of these items are on the five-year capital plan going forward. So if they're funded in, using funds from ARPA, they won't appear in a town meeting in the future. So that's the background of it. So generally, the outcome of our discussion tonight should be that the school committee, in effect, vote them all to be presented to the finance team so that they can be rolled into whatever the finance team has to review and can offer to the Board of Selectmen next Tuesday. So that's how we got here, and we certainly didn't waste any time trying to put together a list to help us in many things that otherwise might be difficult or problematic to get funded. So with that, back to you.
Yeah, I just want to sort of note a note of thanks to Kelly, Jack Pello, John Green, and Anita for kind of pulling most of the information for these together. I think that was definitely a group process of reaching out to kind of get estimates from those people who have, have dispensation from the state for us to work around the bid process and make sure we've got some good numbers to bring forward. So I think that's if, you know, I don't know if you all want to do that motion and?
Don't you just present the first page of each one?
You want to go through each one? Okay, sure.
And then, then that way, everybody here knows what's going on.
Okay, that sounds good. All right. So starting off, repairs to the Gibbons and Armstrong parking lots. And these are both kind of items that appear in capital plan. One is, I think, slotted for this year for FY '26, or the upcoming budget, another for FY '28. And, you know, bundling them together is actually efficient. If we can do them both at the same time, you know, the work's all in the same general area. And, you know, I think a lot of this is around safety, particularly in times when there is water accumulation. I think that's really the concern that the operations department has. Unless there's anything else you want to, yeah, okay. So that's the kind of very simple, high-level version of that. The high school parking lot is a little bit more complicated because it's sort of, again, bundles together a couple of things. The high school parking lot repair project was, is also on that capital plan list. In addition, there is a request that we received in this year's sort of call for requests to the budget from the athletic director about creating an electrical connection for the pickleball and softball fields. And that has to do with lighting, I believe. And again, you know, I think the strengths of these top two is these are facilities that are used not only by students and at those particular schools, but they're facilities that are kind of widely used by, you know, recreation, by other people in town. So when we can sort of take care of those facilities in a thoughtful way, it's benefiting our students and families certainly, but the entire community. The third one, we have a couple of technology proposals. We've started and are kind of working through bit by bit these security camera updates. I think this would be a wonderful thing to be able to take care of more quickly, obviously. You know, when we think about kind of issues around school and school safety. One tool we have in our toolkit around school safety is having strong coverage of security cameras and being able to really see things outside and in the parking lots and the hallways and in large group areas. So some of the schools have already been done. Hastings is a place where these upgrades have yet to be done. And so putting them all together and doing it in one fell swoop would be possible through this program. Additionally, classroom projectors have a similar kind of story. These are things that will replace kind of in smaller batches over time, or we can replace a lot of them in a larger batch. I think one reason we included this proposal, the furniture proposal, and the, what's that thing at the, at the stadium where they make announcements?
Press box.
The press box, thank you. Those proposals are sort of smaller dollar amounts. We wanted to have a few things on the table, like I say, in case, you know, if the committee gets together and uses up all the money except for $30,000, it would be great to have something that sort of slots in and takes care of a need that's been identified. And projectors, furniture, and projectors and furniture in particular for us are proposals where we could even fund a portion of the proposal and still get somewhere with that. The high school press box, this has a leaky roof. Right? Yes. And I think, you know, this, this one is a need for repairs to the ramp, replacement of the floor and doors, and also just making sure that, you know, this structure is kept intact and viable. And again, you know, the high school playing field, and particularly the football field and area where the press box is, it's a sort of a big community area, as well as a high school sports area. And finally, furniture, as I mentioned, and this you heard about from Kelly last time in terms of the needs throughout the district. You know, one thing she didn't mention that I'll put out there is that, you know, furniture can last a while and not be very great for student learning. So some of the furniture replacement is about wear and tear. Some of it is about, you know, finding good furniture that matches both the sort of differential in size in some of our kids, but also, you know, newer furniture is just designed better. It's ergonomically designed, it's designed to be used with, in some cases, with a laptop or an iPad. It's designed to sort of have kind of. or an iPad, it's designed to sort of have kind of better balance and things for kids. So when we're looking to replace outdated furniture, some of it is about, like, really outdated, but some of it is also about, you know, having students have seating that works for them so that they can keep focused on learning and not on being uncomfortable. And those are it, those are the five.
So again, the criteria is that the school committee would have to vote each one favorably, and then it goes through the process.
Yeah.
School request under ARPA, I think, was the primary target of ARPA with recreation and other things that could be done. So for us, these would all be qualified if the money was available. Sarah, I think you have a question.
I do. One is, are these set in any order of priority for us if we were to get some and not get...
No, no, because we don't have a right to set the priority. The town will pick what they want to fund.
Okay.
Or not. I mean, we may not get anything, but certainly wanted to be ready.
And then are they going to come back with some questions with, like, for example, you've got classroom projectors, but then it doesn't say how many projectors the $55,000 would buy. I imagine we could get some questions about that. I imagine we're prepared for that.
Yeah, we'll get quotes from John about what exactly each projector costs. It may be a little different in different kind of classrooms with different models, but we'll be ready to handle that.
Yeah, because that might be a good thing.
Well, the same rules will apply to us. Let's say that we wanted to buy in the $35,000 X number of projectors, and you couldn't buy nine because we didn't have enough money, and we could buy eight, so the difference that's left over would go back to the government.
Yep. We'll do our best to land it on the nose as closely as we can.
And then lastly, and if you can answer this, great. If not, if it's a more complicated answer, we can, you don't have to answer it. I'm just wondering how these, how it came to be that these particular items were the ones that were chosen. Was it the dollar amount associated with them? Was it...
I think they're things that are sort of, we can, you know, as Steve mentioned, things we don't have to go out to bid for so we can get kind of our, get our ducks in a row quickly and have a reasonable price estimate to go forward to the finance team meeting. And, you know, they're also things that surfaced either, and have been either hanging out on the capital plan or have surfaced recently as needs, so things that we know we need to take care of. And if we don't do it this way, we're going to have to do it some other way.
So part of the answer to your question, though, is, for example, on the Armstrong Gibbons parking lot repair, they are detailed in the request, in the five-year request for fiscal '28 and '26.
Yes, right.
So there are supporting background documents that can be looked up to fit most of these. I think...
Yeah, some of them are moved up, so that's good.
Yeah, yeah. But the idea is some of these may be difficult to get in those years. Again, if you recall, the capital expenditure process simply is that we're, every request we have is thrown into the pool of everybody else's request in that year. And the allocation of funds against those is basically a percentage function of the town's budget. So although that percentage has changed a little bit, but, you know, if we ask for 20 million and there's only, say, six or seven allocated, many of us won't get what we asked for.
And then with that, I just want to, because the furniture thing comes to mind, and we talked about it so much, and some of these other things as well, about our attempt to try and add a line item, you know, to cover a lot of these things as part of our normal maintenance, you know.
FFV line.
I mean, I know right now this is a great opportunity. I'm not sure when this came about, but nonetheless, it's...
It's here.
It's here, and we're going to do it. So with that, I would like to make a motion that we approve the presentation of the applications for funding via ARPA. I would like, you know, move to approve the Gibbons Armstrong parking lot proposal, WHS parking lot proposal, electricity for tennis courts and softball field, Hastings security camera upgrade, classroom projectors, WHS press box, and the furniture.
I second.
Tim, do you have any comments?
No comments, no.
All right.
I do have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just one question. If any of all of them are approved, and they will be funded through the ARPA money, would that have a positive impact on our budget, on the school budget?
On the capital side, certainly. On the, you know, some of the funding for things like projectors and security upgrades sometimes comes out of our technology operating budget, so potentially. I don't know that, you know, in terms of what we would do about that in a one-year kind of situation, I want to be thoughtful about. I wouldn't necessarily drop the operating budget moving forward because a lot of costs in technology are going the other direction, but it might allow us to kind of manage our operating budget a little better, if we had a little wiggle room there, too.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded in favor of all six of the proposals brought forward to be voted by the school committee and presented to the finance team on Friday. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Zero. Very good.
I think my last, right here, is budget. Let me, I wanted to, first of all, thank you. I thank our kind of district leadership team, principals throughout the district, and other department heads, and sort of submitted information about the state of their departments, the state of the school, requests that they would have, and kind of needs that they identify going forward. I really want to thank Anita, who has spent many, many, many hours with me on the phone over the last few weeks as we've tried to kind of pull together and make sense of the numbers, looking ahead to next year and do our best with projecting. Also, Tammy Costello and Paige Thomas, I think, did a lot of work in the background and on really kind of combing in a lot of detail through things on the staffing side. And our student services department, really looking, taking a hard look at what's going on in special education and helping us understand that. And Kelly, of course, in buildings and grounds, you already heard from her a couple of weeks ago, and the kind of level of care and attention she gives and she and her department give to the schools is tremendous. So I am going to dive in here. Quick overview of how the presentation here is structured tonight. I want to kind of loop back and tell you where we are in the budget development schedule. I want to say a brief few words about what the budget is philosophically from where I stand. Talk about context, because I think context matters. Highlight some priorities and shifts for FY '26. I'll give you a draft, big-picture numbers. It looks a little different from when we sort of projected during the tri-board summit, you know, the finance summit. I want to talk about what we will not be able to fund in FY '26 unless something exciting happens, and also talk about some unknowns looking ahead. So first of all, you've seen this before. We developed a budget development schedule. I updated it to show, highlighted where we are here tonight, and to also acknowledge one piece of the puzzle that hasn't happened yet is we haven't yet had our meetings with the subcommittee representatives from the advisory finance committee. We've done outreach, we're getting those on the books, so we'll have that updated shortly. But other than that, we are making good progress and are on track, and I appreciate the support of the entire team and also of the committee, as I'm kind of getting used to Westboro and learning the process. I really think in any district anywhere, a school budget has two main functions. One is really around advancing the mission of the schools, which in pretty much any school, no matter how it's phrased, is to provide high-quality education for all the children. That is core and fundamentally fundamental, and the funding we get helps us hire people, buy materials, run bus runs, do all the things we need to do to make sure kids learn and that they learn in a way that opens up opportunities for them. In addition, an important piece of the budget is to help us continue to make progress in our strategic priorities. I linked the strategic plan. We're not going to go into detail, but it's just a nice reminder that good districts don't stay good by standing still. The way we kind of continue to grow and develop is by outlining where are we going, you know, what's in store for the future for our kids, and how can we make sure we're acting in a way that's going to help them be prepared for that future? That's, you know, ultimately what the strategic plan should be about. In terms of context, I have a few things I want to highlight. First of all, understanding when we're talking about high-quality education, what are the sort of signs that it's happening, right? And I can tell you, I'm so excited by this district and what I've seen here for a number of reasons, but, you know, it's really phenomenal, the kind of work that's happening, and you can see it in these very tangible ways in data that's out there. You know, we've got very strong scores and postgraduate kind of stats for our kids. Our kids are going off to college at a very high rate. They're doing well on the SAT, they're taking a boatload of AP exams and scoring very well on those. The district maintains a very high rating on things like Niche, which is, I think, a real estate kind of targeted app, US News &amp; World Report, and Boston Magazine. Our MCAS scores, as Daniel presented recently, are strong, among the strongest in the state. And when you also look at that Metro West survey data about youth risk behavior, one of the things I'd want to note is that in addition to being academically strong, our kids, when you look at them compared to other groups in Metro West, seem to be like doing okay, too. They're a little less stressed out, they're very involved, they work hard, they seem to get some sleep. You know, we noticed they are maybe making some bad decisions around driving, we're going to go after that. I think those are things that we can attack. I also want to spend a little time on value for investment and thinking about what happens here in Westboro and why I think it's pretty extraordinary. We do need to talk about enrollment projections and also about the bigger landscape of what's happening, both in terms of inflation and the changing landscape for employers, particularly employers who hire folks for schools. So, you know, I mentioned this in passing, but if you look in detail, you know, at our students' graduation rates and their kind of post-secondary plan rates, we're really well ahead of where the state is. These numbers are interesting. I do want to make one note about them, and I'm kind of curious about this. If we have students who do any sort of gap year, they show up as not going to college, which is interesting to me. And as the parent of a student who did a gap year, I find that very interesting because I'm a very academic kid who made this choice, and so one of the results of these kinds of statistics is they discourage kind of people from, counselors and in schools, from actually pushing some of those ideas, which is too bad. But nevertheless, we have kids heading off to college, four-year colleges and some two-year colleges at a very high rate. If you look, our SAT scores are allowing our students to get access to those colleges. And AP, which is my favorite, one of these, my apologies, this is kind of a wonky slide, I had to screenshot and cut it up from DUCY, but particularly in a couple key areas. So English across the board, world languages across the board, US history, and my favorite, chemistry, which can't possibly be a very easy AP test. Our kids are all scoring in the four and five range, which is great. People have different opinions about AP as programming. It's highly structured, it, you know, tends to move at a really fast pace and cover a lot of content quickly. One thing that's important about it is, for a lot of families, it's a key to affordability at a time when college is extremely expensive. So our kind of commitment to providing this for students is critical for some of our families. Not everybody's going to use these credits, but for folks who do want to use them, they are, they are very key to keeping college manageable.
Could you go back just one slide?
Sure. Hold on.
Yeah. What is our school in our district? That's kind of confusing.
Oh, that's interesting.
I think what it is, is for districts that have multiple schools, they will have like the district number versus the school number, and so they're...
If they're slightly different, it may be because of out-of-district placed kids. So you see slight differentials, but it's mostly going to be the same. But if you go to Newton, for example, where they have multiple high schools, you'd see, you know, Newton North scores, and then the scores of both high schools combined. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. I'm going to talk a little bit about rankings and not much. I don't want to ever make too big a deal out of this because they can change, and they do change over time. But I think they are interesting because often the things that US News &amp; World Report or Boston Magazine are looking at are things that matter to people, right? They are college readiness, their test scores, their what's the curriculum look like, you know, what are we doing around kind of other forms of performance for underserved kids? So this is kind of where we fell in relationship to benchmark communities. These are the communities that the town and schools have agreed to use as our comparative districts, and you can see the metrics there, and Westboro's doing quite well. When it comes to the Boston Magazine ranking, we're doing extraordinarily well. And I wanted to point this out. This is Boston-area high schools. You'll notice among our comp communities, the one that doesn't appear is Shrewsbury, and we think it's because they fall just outside the geographic area that Boston Magazine uses for this list. So I think they'd be up there. I do want to talk about this, though. These are, whoops, these are not our comp towns. However, the fact that we are in that 12th-place spot in Boston Magazine, I think it's worth taking a look at what's going on in the top 20. You know, if you want to think about quality of education, places where people are really investing a lot in education, you can see these are the schools that are on that list. And that list is going to change a little bit year to year, but we're kind of solidly in there with some really extraordinary districts. Now, what I think is really important is thinking about the value of what you get in Westboro. So Boston Magazine, when they publish this list, they also publish some really interesting statistics about other things. One of those things is home price, median home price. So if you want to live in one of these districts, here's kind of what we're looking at in terms of the cost of getting a house. And Westboro is, in my mind, on the side of the scale you would want in terms of access to housing. So I'm not saying it's particularly affordable, but it's definitely more affordable than some of our other districts in that top 20 list. The same kind of data, and maybe even more so, when you look at income. So the median income in Westboro is right around, I'm trying to, let me hover on here, I can tell you exactly what it is according to this data. Maybe I can. It's not letting me hover right now. But I think it was $133,000, that's median. So what I like about this is you don't have to be a millionaire to get access to high-quality education, that this is a town where kind of regular people are here making a living and have access to pretty extraordinary things in their schools. You know, you'll notice that Wellesley and Weston are in dark green, that's because they don't even report the median income, it just is $250,000 plus, somewhere up there. And then finally, per pupil spending in these districts. This is a different source, so that information from those prior three sides is Boston Magazine. They don't report per pupil. The way you find that is through the Department of Education website, and it's always a little bit behind, so the most recent data that's available is 2022. But again, we're right where I would want us to be, which is, you know, we're actually getting a lot out of the dollars we spend. We're on the lower kind of part of that scale and making the most of the money that the community invests. So I share that, you know, as a little bit of saying, what people are doing here is producing really good results in a way that I think is actually smart and a good investment. The dollars that the town... The dollars that the town spends are going a long way. And it's a place where kind of, you know, regular folks are coming and living and getting a good education. Another piece of that context is to talk about enrollment. You know, I mentioned this early on. Daniel did a fuller presentation, and I'm going to cycle back to it because I think it is critical for us to be thinking about as we think about the budget. So, this is this graph you've seen before, and it shows this sort of decline in the last couple of years. It's not a major decline, but it is a slight decline. And that generally speaking, enrollment is not super volatile here. We've got a relatively small delta between the high and the low. However, I do want to note this important thing about where we are today, which is, this is a slide from the presentation that Daniel did where you look at enrollment by grade level. If you take those grade levels and make the assumption that once kids are here, they're pretty much going to stay here and kind of move. Our first graders are going to move from first grade to second grade and eventually graduate out from the high school. And if you look in at these groups of kids by high school cohort. So, for example, right now, we have ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade. That's 24, 25. And then if we move back, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th grade, that's kids who will be at the high school in 25, 26. The net result of that is, when you kind of dial it back, we do see that in the lower grades, the enrollment has shifted downward. And by the time those lower grades get to the high school, we are going to see fewer kids unless something changes. So, this is the, the challenge of enrollment is we never want to get too kind of attached to our numbers because they could turn on a dime. So, with the exception of this uptick in 28, 29, you know, you're seeing this sort of slight decline over the years. I think that's important, and we've thought about that very seriously in terms of planning for this year, but also thinking about what are we going to do moving forward in, in terms of meeting our kind of goals for students? You know, if we have fewer students, do we need to change structures and programs and do things differently to meet the needs of fewer students? And final bit of context, as I mentioned, you know, we are in an environment where a few things are very much true. Inflation is very real right now, and particularly in two areas that are critical. Transportation costs and out-of-district tuition costs are very, very high. We have kind of a labor market that's complicated. You know, we just had news of teachers on strike in the North Shore in three different communities. Many communities in the state started school this year without being fully staffed. And teachers throughout the country, not just throughout the Commonwealth. This is kind of a big issue that's out there. How do we attract teachers to the profession? How do we keep them here? How do we kind of keep our schools moving in a way that's not disruptive? So, that's important context for us as we think about the budget because we need to create a budget that provides us thoughtful room so that when we go into contract negotiations next year, we can actually negotiate a reasonable and fair settlement. So, with all that backdrop and context, here's kind of priorities for FY '26. First of all, you know, I've said this a couple of times, but I want to reiterate what we're bringing forward is a level services budget. It's not a level funded budget. Level funding would actually mean massive, massive job cuts in this kind of district. But it is level services, which means we're not looking to do a massive expansion in any kind of way, shape, or form. We're going to try and live as closely as we can with what we are doing now in terms of programs and structures. That means keeping classes within class size guidelines, you know, continuing the work that is in line with our strategic plan around investment in student supports, in their kind of academic health, in their mental health and well-being, maintaining our level of support for our high-need students. You know, I talked about that earlier. Our investment in our kind of model for special education is keeping more students in the district, and that's a great long-term investment, not only for the students, but economically for the community. And as part of that, we are going to start this year to make some strategic reductions based on enrollment. So, starting to look at where can we reduce some staff so that we can kind of keep our numbers down, but also be responsive to the bigger picture. Okay. Couple of changes I want to foreshadow in the budget book. One is a change that I know we've had requests from the community about, and we've talked about, and Sarah mentioned. And that is to kind of re-align our budget book so that we're showing our FTE and our salary lines in the cost centers. So, really showing kind of how are the staff divvied up? Where do they live? What does it cost to have paraprofessionals and administrators and teachers at Mill Pond, for example? So, really being able to see those different elements clearly. And the other thing is, we've been working a lot on kind of clarifying full cost. What does it take to run the schools before we apply offsets? So, an offset could be grant funding. We do have federal grants that are used in part to fund, for example, paraprofessional salaries in special education. Another form of offset would be a revolving account, like the WEC account. So, tuition that comes in from the preschool is used in part to offset the cost of hiring preschool paraprofessionals, things like that. How am I doing with my offset explanation? Okay, thank you. So, in the past, those have not always been shown both, both sides of the coin. I think it's really important to show those really clearly for a couple of reasons. One is, without showing them, you don't have a sense of the true cost of salary, like real cost, before we're batting it down. And secondly, I will say, in some cases, overreliance on offsets can become a real problem down the road. And so, part of what I think our job is to look at those carefully and make sure that we're sort of, in cases where we're, we need to move away from it, we start to do that movement over time in a way that's responsible. So, those are two changes forecasting for you with the budget book. So, here's our overview, kind of where we've landed. And I'll dive into a little bit of detail. So, in salary line, this is not exactly the on, but it's not too far off of, I think, where we forecast for the budget summit. So, if you look at, we have the FY '25 budget, proposed FY '26. What's the change and what's the percentage increase? So, that percentage increase for salary includes a number of things. I'm going to go into that in the next slide. And it is higher than the COLA cost, but the COLA cost, as we've talked about, doesn't tell the whole story. There's that cost of living increase, but there's also steps and lanes. So, the overall cost of salary moving forward is always higher than just the COLA settlement in the contract. Special education and transportation. As you can see, when you look at the incremental change and the percentage change, major issues for us to contend with this year, very significant issues. In special education, we have another increase in the cost of out-of-district tuition. Additionally, we just think there, we're anticipating changes in terms of kiddos kind of moving in different places. So, that's a piece of that puzzle as well. It's important to acknowledge. Transportation. The transportation line here includes both regular in-district transportation, special education in-district transportation, and out-of-district transportation. We've factored in different kind of inflation factors. We opened the bids from busing companies on Friday, and at that point, either Anita and I are going to go celebrate or go cry in the corner. We're not really sure. We're hoping that, that we've guessed somewhere correct and that the transportation gods are smiling on us. They don't seem to do that for anybody these days, so, so I don't want to bet too much on that. Utilities. We did forecast an adjustment. This is a little higher than we thought we were going to come in, but it was due to some work that we really did, looking at actually where the projections are. And then anything we can control, we kept way down. So, if you look at the, the supply lines, buildings and grounds and things like that, we've reduced those to be inside of two and a half wherever we could and as low as we possibly can and still have a responsible budget moving forward. So, if you look at the subtotals there, the other thing that's in the mix here is offset. The salary line up, up top already has some offset applied, and I'll talk about that in the next slide. But here, non-salary offsets includes a lot of things. The biggest chunk is circuit breaker funding, but also money that's applied from some of the revolvers that go toward. I'll give a concrete example is maintenance. Because the community education program utilizes our buildings and grounds, we pay for some of the maintenance costs within the district through a charge to that account. Okay? So, all in, the total increase is looking at about 5.75%. That could change in the next week as we look at best bids and other things. And it could change, you know, before all is said and done. I will say it took some work and like head scratching to get us here. And I'll show you a little bit about that in the next couple of slides. First of all, salary. I want to kind of walk through the start and end here. So, our FY '25 all-in salary cost was the voted cost for last year. This is what was in the budget, is a little over $56 million. When you add COLAs, steps, and lanes, that bumps us up over $60 million. And that percentage is much more than that 5.6 or whatever it was, 6, 7, from the prior page. That percentage is actually closer to eight total. And we knew that's not tannable. So, we looked at where can we kind of make some adjustments? We do need to do one small addition, but we found a different way to pay for it. So, we're adding 0.4 PE at the high school. That's the only approved addition from all the things that people asked for. And frankly, we're approving it because of class size. These are class sizes of over 30 students. That's a safety issue, as far as I'm concerned, and that's a priority always for the district. We are going to begin to reduce staff. Right now, thankfully, those reductions, we believe, will be able to be done through attrition, through retirements or people leaving the district for other reasons. It's a manageable number. We already know of some retirements happening. And so, I think it's a responsible way to kind of handle that when we can. We haven't determined exactly where those are going to be yet, but we'll be looking at enrollment. And as you saw, you know, the enrollment is skewing higher with the older grades, lower on the younger grades. So, chances are, we can look there. But we're confident, having looked at all our enrollment numbers in detail, that we can absorb those cuts without a loss to services and keeping classes within class size guidelines. That's really critical. Our classes are inside of guidelines now. We're going to keep them there, especially with younger students. The final piece of this puzzle is grants and revolving funds offset. We are carrying more salary right now than I would like or planning to on revolving accounts and, and grants, especially the IDEA, the federal grant around special education. A reason to try and move away from that is we don't know the future of those grants. You know, what's going to happen in the years ahead? How much of that funding will be available? So, we do need to start to think about ways to wean ourselves off of that type of reliance on grant-funded positions. The district's done a nice job not being overly reliant on that in the past, and I think it's, it's in good shape because of it. There were many districts that used ESIR funding to add a bunch of positions and then kind of had to fall off the cliff once that funding dried up. And that has not been the case here. So, go Westboro. Okay. Special education tuition, as I indicated, is an area where we're anticipating a big uptick. Most of our special education line is really around tuition. And it's not around sort of materials and supplies. This is kind of the big, the big nut. And this is covering two types of tuition, collaboratives, which tend to be, as I mentioned when we talked about circuit breaker, more affordable options that are local. It's groups of districts banding together to kind of make an affordable opportunity for kids and both accept in Assabett Valley or collaboratives that we work with. And then out-of-district private tuition. You know, as I've indicated in the past, Westboro does an excellent, excellent job with its student services programming. We're keeping a lot of kids in district and doing a nice job programming up, so we minimize those costs. So, these are estimates, and they really are projections, both for the year we're currently in and for next year. And the reason is that this picture can change very quickly. If a student moves into town and has a profile where we just aren't equipped to provide programming for that student, then out-of-district is what that student requires. And we, you know, as a town and as a community, we pay for that. And that's an important obligation to maintain. So, circuit breaker, one of the reasons where the next year is tricky is that our circuit breaker that came in this year for last year that we'll use to pay for next year is lower. And our estimated costs are higher. So, when you see that big jump of the differential in special education, that's what we're worried about. Transportation. I wanted to just give you a quick breakdown of our estimates. For our in-town transportation, we built in an estimate of a 10% increase next year. We don't know how that's going to come out, and we won't know until Friday. It's significantly more than we've seen in those budget increases in the past. You know, we think it could be higher. We really just won't know until we open up the bids. And like I said, we're going to keep our fingers crossed. We built in an even larger escalation for the out-of-district. We're currently in a contract for out-of-district, but that contract, which is being sort of managed through Assabett Valley, is complicated. And I have to say, I'm impressed. I feel like the folks who are managing are going to bat for the member districts and doing a nice job advocating. But it's a contract that has a base rate and then add-ons. And the add-ons appear to be adding up much more than anyone anticipated. So, that's why we've built in a massive escalation there, is we really think we might need it. Finally, ESY summer program is included in the 10% escalation in town. Unfunded requests. We, you know, honestly, the cost center leaders were very, I think I scared them a little bit, and people didn't put a lot on the table because I sort of said, I don't think this is the year to ask for a lot of stuff. But they did do a nice job saying, here are things that if we could get them would be really helpful to the district. And they include support for English language instruction. As you heard from Tisha, things are ticking up. We haven't funded that position going into next year. We have a position posted right now for sort of a temporary stopgap help, but we've paid for it using one-time money with a kind of temporary, you know, in a temporary way. And given that there's no kind of extra money lying around, it doesn't look like we'll be able to sustain that into next year. I got an interesting request for a kind of permanent sub or a building-based sub at the K-3 schools in trying to pilot a program like that. Those are kind of a useful tool, probably not something we'll be able to do this year, but very helpful to have somebody who just shows up every day in the building, knows the kids really well, and can be deployed. It's more costly, though, than a daily sub. Also, request for increases in student services coordinator at Mill Pond. Just a slight increase to allow that person to sort of have more range in their job in terms of working with the different programming at Mill Pond. It's a very big four-to-six school, and they have a lot going on. The high school had asked for additional funding to expand their journalism program and especially with the sort of TV media and partnership with Westboro TV. And in addition to a paraprofessional who would be kind of housed in the library but have a kind of multi-function role. And district-wide additional funding for pianists to support the music program and an administrative assistant for the English language learning program. So, those are all unfunded, short-term. There are some long-term requests that came in as well, and I can highlight those at a later presentation. So, what do we still not know? You know, first and foremost, the bus contract bids. Like I said, those come in on Friday, and that could change the outlook for us. We don't know how successful Assabett Valley will be with their management of those van contracts for out-of-district transportation, but all of the districts involved are sort of throwing support behind them and wrangling as best we can together. We really don't know, long-term, what the impact of the election's going to be. You know, what's it going to be? You know, what's it going to be on the economic climate in terms of inflation and so forth, the cost of fuel and things like that? We don't know what's going to happen around federal grants. I don't think anything's going to happen dramatically and quickly on that front. It usually takes some time, but we'll see. And finally, enrollment, although we really do believe it's sort of a slight decline that we're planning on. We're going to watch it very closely, and if anything changes, we'll be thinking and talking about how to pivot and plan for that. And that was a lot of me talking, so I'm going to stop and let you ask questions, but thank you. I really appreciate you sort of hanging in there with me.
Initial questions or comments? Yakub?
Oh, it's a privilege to go first.
I can go to the other end.
No, that's fine. Thank you. This was great. I actually, I really appreciate the, I think it was an excellent presentation. You presented information very clearly. I mean, I actually kept writing questions, and then you kept answering them while you were talking, so I reduced the number of questions from 10 to one. I'm very impressed with this presentation. I appreciate the effort to reduce the cost by those five FTEs. And, I mean, it looks like what's driving the, you know, the bigger drivers, the bigger drivers that are, they are all, seem to be out of our control, like the COLA and the transportation and the SPED costs. So I hope the town at large appreciates that this is what's really driving the increase. My only question is, I guess, really is that I want to understand, you explained it, but I didn't quite get it. I'm trying to correlate the offset for the Circuit Breaker with the costs from the past. So it looks like, if I look at the 24, 25, the numbers are just keep going up, but we're good. So the 26 projection, that's the expected offset, 1.7 for this fiscal year, right?
Yeah, so 1.7 is what we know we are receiving, and we receive it sort of incrementally throughout the year, quarterly. I think they send it to us based on last year's claims. And then we sort of stack that away and apply it to next year, is kind of how Circuit Breaker works. The real challenge of that is that it makes budgeting very hard, and I will say, what it does do is it promotes a tendency for us to be hyper-conservative when we budget for special education out of district. So we kind of do our kind of most expensive scenario, because if we don't, we could get caught off-guard. Because of that, you know, okay, I'm back. There's a button you can push right there. Because of that, you know, one of the things I think is really worth exploring in Westboro is a mechanism that most towns that I know of have, which is a special education reserve account. It's established, and it needs to be established through a vote of, initially, of town meeting, usually established with some sort of source of initial money. And then a kind of mechanism for feeding it is also established. Some communities, for example, have been using the Medicaid reimbursement as kind of a way of feeding that account. What that does is it provides a safety net. So if there is a volatile change in special education, you're able to fund it, and it's a flexible account that allows the district to access it for that very specific purpose. And what's nice about that scenario is we don't have to budget with the most expensive thing we can imagine in mind. We can actually budget a little bit more, we can assume a little more risk in the budget process because we've got a safety net somewhere else, is sort of the way that works.
Thank you. And you mentioned that this year it's like a double whammy because we're getting less money, but the costs are going up.
And the costs are going up, yeah. The costs are going up, and this projection looks at a few things. It actually looks, they look at like, where do we have students? Where are they coming from and going to? Who are the individual students involved? And where do we think they're going to land? One additional note I need to make about the costs here. You know, I've talked about OSD. They're the ones that set the price limits on increases in tuitions. Another factor that is kind of hidden and that people don't talk about, but that also leads to this massive increase, is that we get billed separately in addition to tuition for other related services for students who are out of district. So speech and language, OTPT, things like that. So it's not only the tuition costs, it's these other costs that are added into the bill as well. And those have skyrocketed as well. So it really is stuff that's well outside our control. I'll throw out one good news thing, which is that this is an area where the State Superintendent's Association has advocated consistently and strongly with the state. I don't know if they're going to get anywhere, but they keep at it and keep asking, you know, can you adjust the percentage reimbursement? And can you help us with this runaway train that is the cost of about a district?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the presentation, for pulling together all these numbers. I have a related question on the special education, and you kind of already answered it. And it had to do with how confident you feel about the projections. But I've now heard that you really tilt it toward the more conservative estimate so that we're not caught shorthanded, which in fact happened a few years ago. So, you know, having answered, having heard that answer, I'm now curious about the special education reserve account idea. What that needs to be, that would need to be brought before the town meeting? What would be necessary to do that, to bring that before town meeting? Because I do think that that is, well, one, it's a good idea. I think it's also something that the town would approve because of what happened a few years ago where, you know, there was almost, at the meeting, there, there just, there were a lot of questions about it and a lot of, I would say, confusion surrounding the issue. And I think a lot of unawareness on the part of the townspeople just how much out-of-district tuition can be. And so I think it, you know, for a few students, given that it was for a few students, it, I think it hit some people particularly hard, you know, seeing, you know, why the costs are what they are.
Yes, yeah. I think, and, you know, I'll be honest, I think one positive feature of a special ed reserve is it's, you know, sometimes you have to do kind of right by a student, and the way you do that is through an out-of-district placement, and sometimes it's very costly. And it's really, I feel for families in that situation. I would not want sort of my kid's future hanging on the line around a public vote and public conversation about that, the needs, right? So I would prefer we kind of do this and manage it in a way that's more respectful. And I think a special ed reserve does that. In terms of the mechanism, we would need to, I would need kind of your approval to bring the idea forward. It would need to get approved through the finance committee and select board. And then it would have to be a warrant article to establish it. And any time it's funded, any time money goes into it, would also have to be approved. And then in terms of funding coming out, from what I understand, there are different forms of this, but the reserve form of it would need a vote from the school committee and select board to pull money out, but it doesn't have to go all the way to town meeting.
Seth?
Yeah.
Okay. Sarah?
So I don't have any questions. I just wanted to appreciate you for this presentation. I think that it was so informative. I think one of the things that I really appreciated, you know, we think about this all the time. It's very easy as a parent or even a school committee member to look at our town in a vacuum and say, okay, this is how we're, what our performance is, and question everything behind it. But to look at it in relation to other towns, I think the income piece is so, so important because we oftentimes are comparing ourselves, or I do it personally as well, to towns that are, that have a much higher median income. And I think that we fail to recognize that we're producing some pretty amazing, you know, educated students with, and not, and not at the same, you know, with much less, basically. So I really appreciate that. I think that this was really informative, and I just wanted to say that. So, thank you.
Yeah. Just a couple of quick questions. I'll start by saying thank you as well for putting this all together. I'll echo what Yakub said, where I was trying to come up with questions, and you kept answering them, so I really appreciate the presentation. Just a couple of quick things. I know, and I am looking at the slide here with the proposed budget overview. I know that you said that you tried hard with the buildings and grounds and the all other non-salary items to keep them at, you know, under the 2.5%. I am curious, would you say that that is a sustainable number? Like, were there things that were being deferred that will be have to picked up in future tabs? Or?
That's a good question. Honestly, probably will need to adjust those up within a couple of years. It's not unusual in a school district to kind of flatline those accounts for a couple of years and then try and adjust them up. I do know things cost more. I mean, I had Eric Perryman from the high school was mentioning the cost of chocolate chips yesterday for the culinary arts program. It's gone through the roof. So, you know, things like that or engineering supplies, you know, we will have to figure out how to do more with less, or, you know, how to really look at other kind of possible sources. You know, whether that's doing a little bit of work with grants, you know, you've got a good educational foundation here. We've got Amazon in the community, maybe we can hit them up a little bit for some of those things, short-term, to kind of get us over to a place where, you know, really, my goal with the budget is trying to think about sustainability over time. How do we kind of start to craft something that is not feeling like a runaway train? You know? It's important.
Yeah. And that is a nice segue into my next question, talking about sustainability. I do really, I was glad to see on the strategic reduction relating to enrollment, and I think that is very smart. I am just curious, almost to play devil's advocate, the five full-time reduction staff like that is directly related to enrollment, is that correct?
Yes.
Just what that would look like potentially in future years if enrollment does start to increase, like do you see potentially bringing back those full-time employees? Like if, say, next year and the year after, we start to see increases in enrollment? Or do you see that being a more permanent measure?
Yeah, I mean, right now, as far as we know, kind of projection-wise, we think things are going to kind of do a slight trend downward, nothing dramatic. The only thing that I think could be a wrinkle is development, you know? If there's, there is some development that will come online in a few years, and we may have to just keep a really close eye on that and start to pivot. You know, other options may look at configuration. How do we, how are we using the staff we do have and trying to do that differently, too? So I think, I think we're going to manage in a way that's educationally sound, though, and we'll be fine.
Thank you.
My question is, on the fiscal '26 projection, is the amount that's shown for the Circuit Breaker 100% of the available funds? Or is it some percentage of the available funds? And the reason why I say that is historically, prior finance advice was that we would carry between 75 and 80% of what was allocated to us under special ed to give us the internal ability to absorb changes that would happen as a result of the state's, if you will, management of those accounts. And specifically what I mean, and I think Steve was referring to it earlier, that the state negotiates those services with the vendors who supply the special ed out of district. And in fact, in past, many years past, it was pretty flat, 2%, 3%, 5%. Couple of years ago, it was 14%, and it's now running away. And so what we did was, we hedged the amount of money that we would show in the budget relative to the amount that was actually supplied. So my question, and again, is that money shown 100% of what we've been told? Or is it some percentage of it?
Yeah, the Circuit Breaker number here reflects the true and actual Circuit Breaker coming in and with nothing held back. I don't think it's, I think the goal is to really put it on the table so we know what we've got. And also, I think there's, it kind of helps with an argument for how to kind of structure a reserve account, which is a mechanism for handling that issue that you're talking about. So that is truly kind of our, what we have, will have in hand by the end of this year. The only thing that could impact it, and I will say this, is if we have unanticipated costs in this fiscal year that we have to apply it to.
Yep.
So that could be a thing.
So one of the issues of this reserve account that you're talking about is it has to be an income source.
Yes.
That feeds it.
Yes, that is true.
Okay. And so, as you mentioned, there's the Medicare refund to the general town fund.
Yes.
Which we tried to bring that forward to the town and finance committee and the Board of Selectmen, and it was voted down resoundingly. They want the money.
Yes.
So I'm really suggesting that before we go ahead with a revolving or a reserve account for this, we need to know that, in fact, there's going to be an income to feed it.
Right.
And without that, we need to carry, you know, some kind of balance, if you will, of what the Circuit Breaker is, because things do change.
Yes.
I heard at the conference that some towns force the school committee to use all of the money that shows that comes into the town's budget. We have been able successfully to be able to balance our budget every year that I've been on the school committee. If we always use 100% of the funds that are given to us and we don't have any margin, we won't be able to balance our budget. And those towns that, particularly school committees, who haven't been able to do that, are in deep trouble.
Yes.
Because the only way then that we can balance a budget is to lay teachers off. And I was here when we had to do that, when the state had a shortfall. And it specifically happened as a result of projections that we thought, when we went into the March town meeting, were not fulfilled. And in fact, afterwards, when they finally told us how much, for example, Circuit Breaker was going to be, the only way we could balance the budget was to lay off people. So I'm not sure that, quote, "the revolving account as suggested" is going to work unless there's cooperation across the board. It is true that we return using our efforts in the school department to bill the federal government for our Medicare costs. However, that money doesn't come to the school department. The labor and effort to get it is a benefit to the rest of the town. That's where the money goes. And likewise, other things also happen. So I just raise that as a particularly important point as we go forward, that, you know, full transparency of whether or not we protected ourselves for things that happen at the state level, particularly with, you know, what might happen with our new administration, is critical as to how we go. So certainly, the transparency in the budget is there, but I certainly would like to see us carry, you know, some of that Circuit Breaker as a contingency. So that's a suggestion, I guess, and ultimately, the school committee will decide. But it's critical that we don't get caught short, because the pain of having made a mistake is tremendous on people who teach in our school system.
Absolutely. You know, I think another, I mean, all of that kind of, you know, I know there has not been agreement from the town side around that allocation of that Medicaid reimbursement into a fund for the schools. But I do think a structure of a reserve account is an interesting idea to kind of put out there and put forward, because it does allow for two things at the same time. One is more transparency about what the numbers really are, and second is a safety net, so we don't end up caught short and having to lay off teachers. And I think that's in everybody's best interest. So if we can kind of navigate through all of it with some support on the town side, I think that'd be great.
I would actually suggest that, you know, from time to time during the school year, we have surpluses. If there is a surplus, we have to return it to the town, and it goes into the general fund. I could see us having a reserve account that would... I could see us having a reserve account that would, say, dedicate 10%, 20% of any surplus into that fund.
Sure.
And therefore, that happens as a result of good management of our budget and not necessarily depleting somebody else's.
Yes.
So, like I said, it's very important if we're going to create such a fund that we know how it gets fed, so it's there as a viable solution to these things that happen to us.
Right.
It's going to be a tough year, for sure.
Yes. Agreed.
So if you're all set, and we're all set, we can move on.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is citizens' requests.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak tonight?
Come on up. We'll read our notice first.
Yep. Before we begin, we will remind everyone of the school committee policy regarding citizens' requests. You must be a current resident of Westboro. Speakers are allowed to address the school committee about issues within the school committee's purview. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak to the school committee. Written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the presiding chair before or after the meeting. You are welcome to hand the chair additional comments in writing now, or send them via email, and the chair will share them with the other school committee members. Public comment by residents at this meeting is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between the individuals and the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. Our role is to listen carefully to what you have to share with us tonight. Clapping, cheering, calling out, or any other noise during or following a speaker is not allowed. At the close of the citizens' requests, school administrators may address what was shared by the speakers if they wish to do so. State your name, please, and Sierra Street address. Speak directly into the microphone.
Hi, Joe Considine, Attent Smith Street. Many are hurting as our citizens face residential property tax rates that have grown from 11% higher than our six abutting towns five years ago to 15%. Those towns, Grafton, Hopkinton, Northborough, Shrewsbury, Southborough, and Upton. I have this chart, which I emailed. As a citizen concerned by fellow citizens that are moving out of town or forced to use services of the food pantry, which was up 85% last year, I ask that the school department and other town departments submit budgets that grow at 2.5% and no more, or at least present this as an option for the voters at town meeting. This would save us about $2.1 million from the budget just proposed. Pursuant to this goal, I request the following information. Eight, one, a list and number of non-teaching administrative positions employed by Westboro for the past 20 years. Has this grown substantially? I'd like a chart and a list of positions. I advocate for removal of administrative positions before reducing any teaching positions. Number two, a complete accounting of potential savings if the town eliminated, as an example, the position of assistant school superintendent. Please include all costs for the current year, as well as expected pension costs for the life of the person holding the position. I have nothing against the person currently holding this position, but I just picked it as an example. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'll just remind that our taxes, our tax, our residential rate is 12% higher than Hopkinton. And you saw on the charts that Allison presented, that they're higher than us in a bunch of the rankings, and we are 12% higher. So I'm asking you to try to do more with less. Thank you.
Thank you. My purpose in making a citizens' request is to emphasize the financial inflationary conditions that citizens are facing now as you deliberate your budget. We know that groceries are up 25%. Energy costs are up 35%. Overall, inflation of the last three and a half to four years is close to 20%. So as you deliberate your budget for FY '26, I would ask that you consider these conditions. I lay out four items here comparing, the first one, comparing the household income versus overall town spending. And I was pleased to see that the superintendent is considering the median household income when putting together a budget. We rank 13th out of the 15 comparative communities that we have been looking at over the years. So we're 13th out of 15. Yet our overall town budget ranks sixth highest of the 15 communities. So there's a, seems to be a mismatch in the total spending. When you look at the educational expenditures in the general fund, Westboro ranks seventh highest of the 15 communities that we have been compared to. When you look at per pupil costs, FY '22, as the superintendent also looked at, compared to the 15 communities, we rank eighth highest. So when you look at income, median household income compared to expenditures, there is a gap there that we should be looking at to try to close in some way. One of the suggestions that I make in the leveraging of town resources, that there are several functions that are performed both by the town and by the school department. And there's been school districts that have consolidated these with a resulting at a cost savings. So I would ask that you consider that as a measure. And then finally, the budget transparency, looking to get approval from taxpayers, it needs to have clear transparency. I've made this point before. I was happy to see that consideration will be given to changes in showing the FTE salary lines. I look forward to seeing that. And, but we can, we see from the elections, from the special town meeting, that there's much more scrutiny that's going on. So I would urge you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, the school committee reports. Since Megan's not here, I'm going to start with Tim.
I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Nothing to report tonight.
Nothing to report.
I do have Reagan's report.
I'll fill the void first, and that is that both Allison and I were at the annual conference, MASE and the MASSS, which is the school superintendent's group as well. You may recall, a few months ago, we had the MASE collection, if you will, of offerings to the legislature. It was a very interesting meeting in that regard. A number of amendments were made to many of the articles. They all passed in one way or another to go forward with the state. And the 11 items to be renewed and resubmitted to the legislature all passed as well. I can't really tell you what the effect were of the various amendments to a number of the articles. Eventually, we'll see them written out. And as I said, some of them really seemed to be reverse of what was asked for. So when we get them, I guess we can talk about it then. Other than that, Allison, do you want to?
Sure. I'll read the, so Reagan very nicely typed everything up for me, so I'm going to kind of storm through it here. District-wide, veterans' clothing and toiletry drive is continuing. It ends at the end of this week, November 15. Some of the items most needed for homeless veterans include socks, toiletries such as soap, shampoo, razors, toothpaste, winter hats and gloves, any other winter clothing in adult sizes. And drop-offs are here in Forbes, at the fire station, library, senior center, as well as in all of the schools. The elementary schools, in partnership with, or, this is a partnership between Westboro Connects and the kind of other, our own wellness department, a couple other agencies in town. What is it, square four? Four, I always forget.
Square one.
Square one. Square four. I can't, I haven't internalized the name yet. Our screening, the most recent iteration of the documentary Screenagers. This one focuses on elementary schools. That's going to be next Wednesday, November 20, at 6:30 at Mill Pond Schools. Should be interesting. There's a panel discussion with some of our own folks who have been really thinking about this issue of kids and smartphones and smart technology, and that promised to be a good take. The Turkey Trot, I am signed up. I do not run, but I will walk on December 23 is coming up. So if you want to come and walk in the cold air, please join me. And then from the schools, the high school, it's playoff season. I already mentioned that. Last weekend, the fall play Almost Main opened and was a great success. This week is charity week. This is kind of one of the Pieces of Kindness Week, and it's hosted by the Student Council. All the proceeds are donated to a local organization called Kyle Cares. This nonprofit is dedicated to ending the stigma surrounding mental health and facilitating open conversations around difficult topics such as suicide and teen mental health awareness. As part of Charity Week, activities include a spelling bee, a can drive, movie night, and student versus faculty basketball game, which I did not make it to today sadly, but I, I hope, I don't, I don't know who I hope won on that. Fails had their final book fair on November 7. Spirit Ware has launched for the holiday season with deals of 25% off at Fails. And Picture Retake Day is coming up November 22 at Hastings. Their food drive for the Westboro Food Pantry began yesterday and will end on November 22. We have, throughout the schools, in response to what we understand as an uptick in need from the food pantry, we have a kind of point person coordinating so that we've got drives hitting different schools at different times and can kind of keep sending things along as need be. Also at Hastings, a safety drill this Friday, and Picture Retake's on November 20. At Armstrong, the parent group is hosting an autumn benefit on Friday at Cold Harbor Brewery. And November 18 is Picture Retake Day, and Family Paint Night is November 19. So busy week at Armstrong. At Mill Pond, the 19th, there are going to be some math contests. I'm not sure what those are about. It says perennial, but I think it meant annual.
No, it's perennial math's name of the program.
Perennial math.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's an enrichment program for students that, they stay after school and they do, it's a national kind of.
Oh, that's great. It just like keeps blossoming. Yeah, that's great. More math all the time. From 2-3 in grade six and grade five, it's going to have the contest the following day. The Mill Pond Parent Group will host a veterans' breakfast on November 20 from 8 to 9. At Gibbons, students can register for the AMC eight, which is a math contest of which I am aware. It has 25 questions in 40 minutes for students in eighth grade and below. Registration must be completed by November 22. Intermural badminton has begun at Gibbons, so if you want to go check that out, that should be fun. And eighth-grade boys can now play on the junior varsity ice hockey team. Season starts December 2. And if interested, any eighth-grade boys can direct questions to Levi Hansen and Coach Bellbin. And that's it from Reagan.
Very good. We have two action items. The first one being the approval of minutes from October the 16th. Any comments? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'd like to move to approve the minutes from October 16.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Aye. Five, zero, zero. Also, the question of approval of minutes for October the 30th. Is there a motion?
I would like to move to approve the minutes from October 30.
Your second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Aye. Five, zero, zero. Excellent. With that, we've completed the agenda for the evening, and thank you all for being here, and those at home who've been listening. So with that, that's it. Thank you.
Don't vote to adjourn?
Yeah, I'll move to adjourn. Is there?
I second that.
Okay, no vote. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.